It being the appointed time, let's call a meeting to order. Call the roll.
Sean.
Here.
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 If you would rise and please join me, as Sean gives us the end. First prayer. Lord God, for the abundance of your mercy that we come before you with gratitude this evening.
For all the blessings that we have received, including the opportunity to live in this wonderful city. We remember those in our community who are widowed, who are orphaned, those who are ill, infirm, hurting, and in need. We pray that you will comfort them and that you will cause us to help when and where we can. We thank you for all those who serve our city and our community, and we pray that the actions taken here tonight will be pleasing unto you. And as we go from this place tonight, Lord, keep us in your loving care, that we may serve you with patience and passion, be deliberate in enacting your will, and be steadfast in celebrating your power. All majesty and glory be yours now this evening, Lord, now and forevermore. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and please be seated. Would consider a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Led by Commissioner Shaw.
I'd like to pull one of the items.
L.
Two.
Two. Your motion stand with the exception of item L2, Commissioner?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Is there any discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven zero.
I didn't know whether we was voting for the staff recommendation or the board's recommendation. We approved that, so I'd like a clarification on that.
I'm glad that you asked that, I had that same question.
You probably should just include that in your motion to make it clear which one you're concurring with.
So we could...
You don't want to vote on the pass motion first, I'm sorry.
Pass motion.
Did we vote on the motion? Okay. Yeah, then I'd move that we adopt the planning board's recommendation, deny the request.
So moved.
We have a motion on item 11B to adopt the board's recommended denial of the request, and you may be moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Item two, citizens' participation. We have a three-minute limit per person and a 12-minute limit per topic. If you would like to speak, approach the podium, introduce yourself, sign in, and speak your piece.
You know I have a big crowd Friday night. Yes, and that's exactly what I wanted to say. Okay. For those of you who didn't know, this last Friday night was Third Friday Downtown Block Party. It was packed. We had so many people downtown. We had the street closed in front of our art studio, so much thanks to Mr. Erickson's office and for providing barricades. We had street dancing, and stores were open, and there were things from Tom Terry Park all the way down to the library, and every block stores were, some stores were open. And we had a lot of people out having a really good time. So October, the next Third Friday Block Party will be October 20th, and that's also Boo on Bell that weekend. So if you get the opportunity, bring your kids, your grandkids, your dog, whatever, and come on downtown and really, really jump into our culture and what we do as small-town Shawnee, America, and the good things that are happening. So I invite you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Anyone else? Thank you. Item three, commission appointment of the vice mayor per Article III, Section 6, the city charter. I'm appoint Commissioner Harrod to continue his term as vice mayor. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second. Commissioner Gillum, seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any discussion? Call a question. Motion carries six, yes, one, extension.
Thank you.
Item four, presentation by city manager of the employee to the employee of the month, Jared Jackson, Street Department.
Mr. Mayor, commission members, I'll ask Mr. Jackson to join me up front, please, sir. My pleasure tonight to introduce Jared Jackson to you. Mr. Jackson began working with us for the city in August 2009 in the Street Department. Earlier this year, our HR department received an email from a retired police officer who had stopped to assist a young lady. About 30 bags of pine shavings had fallen from the back of her truck into the intersection. While they began removing bags from the middle of the road, the retired officer looked up to see Jared Jackson, who had stopped to help. With help from Jared, the road was quickly cleared. It may not have been Jared's fault the bags, the bags were in the roadway, or even in his responsibility as his, or either in his work responsibilities to remove the bags. Yet Jared represented the city well, helped the community, and for those actions and for all of his actions as a city employee, we're going to recognize him tonight. Thank you so much.
Item five, presentation and acknowledgement of award of the American Association Retired Persons Community Challenge Grant, funding the installation of a mini traffic circle at the intersection of Byrne Street and Chapman Avenue. Justin DeBruin is not here, so our own Justin Erickson is going to stand in.
Well, I'm happy to make this announcement tonight, that we are receiving a grant from AARP for $9,936. This is a unique project for us, and we're excited about it. It is a mini circle at the intersection the mayor mentioned. This is an area where we've had issues with speeding traffic, it's near the high school, we've had lots of neighborhood complaints. We have met with the Neighborhood Association that represents this area, and they are very much in favor of this effort as well. This was a competitive grant request. There were over 1,200 submittals around the country from all 50 states, and only 88 were selected out of that 1,200, and we were the only ones selected in Oklahoma. And so I'd like to now introduce to you Sean Voskel, who is the state director of AARP, and Michelle Sauerjohn, who is the associate state director of community outreach for AARP Oklahoma. And they will talk to you a little bit more about the selection process and how excited they are to work with us on this project.
What was the time limit again? Keep it short and sweet. Hey, just wanted to come by and Shawnee and Potawatomi County means a lot to AARP Oklahoma. It's been a community-present target for us for many years. We want to appreciate your support. Community market, Potawatomi County has just really been growing and impacting so many folks, and thank you for your support on that. And in fact, Mayor, we just given him a magazine where that project is highlighted in the Where We Live magazine of one of 100 innovative ideas that communities are doing across this country. So we'll make sure you get a copy of that magazine as well. And the Blue Zone Project, again, we look forward to partnering with you all on that as well. Again, we're just excited that Shawnee is a recipient of this community innovation grant. This is the first year that AARP provided some funding, and out of 1,200 applicants, Shawnee was a selected, very competitive grant across the country. And what's important about this project is, we were looking to find some community innovation grants, some opportunities that people can put these projects in use within a couple of months. So the deadline is, it's got to be done by November 1st. And Justin worked very well with us in locating this and having access to livable communities for pedestrians, bicyclists, other vehicles. We think the mini circle, traffic circle, is a great way to make an impact in Shawnee, and hopefully it's one of many to come. But again, thank you for your support on this. We're just excited to be a part of this with you. You've been great partners, and we look forward to continuing partnership in Shawnee and Potawatomi County for years to come. So thank you. It's always good, we brought the check, I'm not sure you can run through the ATM machine, but we're just real excited to be announcing this grant for Shawnee. So happy to...
Get your picture, Mike, Mayor.
No, I don't want to get my picture. I'm thinking, which ward, which council, which district as well.
We might try to run it through.
You leave it, I'll figure out how to get it. Justin, if I may ask, what made our particular application so appealing to AARP?
You know, it was actually Justin DeBruin who submitted the application, so he could speak in a more detailed way as to the criteria. So I don't, I don't know. I don't know if you might want to add something about the evaluation criteria?
The roundabout one, we felt that it really helps slow down traffic. They are much safer than stop signs, they reduce injury, and then it also encourages people to slow down and take part of businesses in that area. So we see roundabout areas for this area to be really innovative, and we're excited to be able to get that funded. Again, it was another project that could also be completed by November 1st and to be quickly implemented, and so we're very excited to be able to partner on that.
Well, thank you very much.
I think it also had kind of uniqueness to that particular area with dual parks that way, but I think it very much related to that community.
Thank you, once again. Item six, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to rezone with conditional use permit for property located at 16712 Mangino Road to allow for a bed and breakfast, case number P-10-17, applicant Laura Davis.
Mr. Mayor, commission members, I'll give a brief staff report. This matter was heard before the Shawnee Planning Commission on September 6th. At that time, it passed unanimously with a 5-0 vote. The proposal calls for the utilization of an existing residential home into a bed and breakfast. Only one unit or one room would be available for rent. Of course, this is at Shawnee Twin Lakes. Shawnee Twin Lakes are unique in that it is leased property, the city does own the underlying land here. We also have a separate set of zoning standards that apply to lake, to the lake. When those standards were updated last, and I think it was 2012, we did allow for a provision there and then in the zoning code in 2014 for bed and breakfast. So this proposal does comply with the zoning code requirements. It has been, of course, reviewed and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Staff has no objection to approving the request. They will, of course, will have to meet any health department requirements, and the applicant is aware of that, related to food service. We have received no correspondence and opposition, and no members of the public testified in opposition at the public hearing that was held on September 6th. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I guess, Justin, if you would, educate me on several things.
Yes, ma'am.
Within the city of Shawnee, would any of us be eligible to establish our residences as a bed and breakfast if we got the rezone to do so?
Yes, we've actually loosened up those requirements considerably. Prior to 2014, that was a very limited allowance or exception where that was permissible or permissible with conditional use permit. Today, though, in the new zoning code, nearly all areas are allowed to have a bed and breakfast subject to this requirement that this applicant is going through, which is a conditional use permit, which requires an application process and a public hearing before the Planning Commission and you. So, subject to those requirements, the conditional use permit allows us to set conditions to address any negative, any potential negative impacts that could occur to the neighborhood. In this case, we've found, we have not found any, but perhaps in other parts of town, there may be some concerns that are expressed by neighbors or other property owners. And so through this process, we can either recommend denial, or you can set conditions to approve it. So a condition could be related to landscaping or screening of parking, or, you know, anything that could help address any concerns that were expressed.
Well, I heard you say that there were no concerns brought up either by the Planning Commission or zoning commission?
Planning Commission, yes, ma'am.
Any commission had any concern?
No, ma'am.
Then educate me on one more item.
Yes.
Considering that this is a limited lease under the city of Shawnee, do we need to have specific language, legal lease language in there, specific to any liability or concerns of the city that may need to indemnify us?
Good question. It's been a while since I've reviewed the lease document. I think we're...
I actually happened to be able to, there are specific indemnification language to do the licenses for any tracks of the work, so I think that would be sufficient. There's also requisite insurance requirements, so I don't think that would create an issue in this case.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I had one. Is this property going to be subject to the lodging tax?
No, I believe the lodging tax, the occupancy tax kicks in at, I think, over three units on a property. So, excellent question. We've had that question before with some of the popularity of some of the online room-sharing options that are out there, and I believe it's over three.
Justin, in relation to what the commissioner just said, I noticed that this individual, when she had submitted her request in the letter, had indicated that she plans on doing this through Airbnb, and they do require or do allow for an excise or lodging tax to be charged through that, here regardless of the number of the rooms. Is that going to be a consideration?
I would say that our, no, our occupancy tax is not applicable. If this is subject to sales tax through the state of Oklahoma, then yes, then Airbnb would collect that sales tax, and then they would also be responsible to collect sales tax for the city. I don't believe it's applicable on sales tax. I haven't looked at that issue specifically. I've only looked at the lodging tax issue.
I'm just looking at precedent setting here. If we establish this, then there may be others that follow this.
I think the difficulty with that is the fact that the lodging tax was passed by both the people that wouldn't, the specificity of which I don't think rises to the level of an application in this scenario.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Declare the public meeting open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? The open hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Move we approve.
Commissioner Harrod?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Duchon. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Do you have to read?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to writ, Lot 5, Johnson Track, City of Shawnee Lake Lease, also known as 16712 Mangino, Magnino Road, to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof, rezoning said property from A-1 Rural Agricultural District to A-1 Rural Agricultural District with conditional use permit, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you very much. Now call a question. Motion carries six, A, one, extension. Item seven, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve an agreement with Excel Auction to auction surplus city property. What is the city property? Mayor and commissioners?
From time to time, the city, just as we've been purchasing new vehicles, we take those old vehicles, we deem them surplus property. We also, excuse me, have chairs, desks, things that the city just no longer needs or, in our terms, is pretty worn out, but other people like to buy them. We deem them surplus property, and we run them through an auction to get rid of it. And this is something, we didn't do it last year, but in previous years, we've contracted with Excel Auctions, who has a regular auction at the Expo Center twice a year, and we just run this in conjunction with that, contract with him. Anything that sells for over $1,000 does not have his 10% fee on it. Anything that sells for under $1,000, of course, he gets a seller's fee of 10% of what it sells for. And it really doesn't cost us anything. The 10% fee is taken out before he even sends us a check. He sends us an itemized list of everything that's sold and what it sold for.
Do you have a list of...
We do not yet.
Stuff that you're going to auction off?
We do not yet.
So this is a kind of a blanket approval, and...
This, yeah. Everything that we send to the auction will come in front of you as a list with serial numbers, everything on it for you to approve, for us to...
So in essence, we're approving the vendor at this point?
Correct.
Okay. Any other question?
Move we approve.
Commissioner Harrod, move we approve?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Shaw. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Consider, item eight, consider approval of change order number one for Fire Station Number Two Rehab Project.
This item is in regard to change order for the Station Two renovation project, and as you see in the package, what I handed out there are two bids that our general contractor has received for the work. The change order is for work that's required to repair or actually correct deficiencies that were found in the steel structure of the building after demolition was complete. Stuff that we couldn't see until the complete demolition of the building was done, down to the red iron structure. And we now had the structural engineer come out and go over the entire structure, and got his report on the deficiencies, and they used that, our general contractor used that to get prices. The initial cost, the initial quote they had was for over $60,000. We and the architects both felt like that was very high, questioned that, and they came back with the two bids that we gave you, that I gave you this evening. The first one was for $45,201, and we asked them to get one more, and the price on that one is $40,597, and that's from John Higginbottom Construction. And I believe that's the recommendation of staff, is to go ahead and move forward and requesting your permission to move forward.
Talk to them anymore about doing it, time and material, but the contractor Higginbottom is letting do of time and material.
We did, the architects did discuss that with them, and this contractor did not express any interest in doing time and material. They felt like they've got it down to, they're believing it's going to be a five-day project, and they didn't, they didn't want to go any further than that, they felt like. So this particular contractor did not show any interest in doing time and materials.
I don't have a problem with the subcontractor bid, I've just got a problem with all the other added-on costs. And Joe, we don't have anything in our contract that just lets them, they actually add an overhead and profit both 10% apiece, we don't have anything in that contract to limit that.
No, it's pretty blanket in there. We actually reviewed it this afternoon, Justin went through it a little bit, and I did as well. We do have the ability to do it on our own. Some of these AI form contracts you don't, but we do in this situation, but I think as has been pointed out by the city manager, that they've got a contractual right to charge us for exercising our right to do it on our own, and so that's kind of the downside there.
Yeah, they, as I talked to one of the commissioners, they've kind of got us over a barrel, but I resent the fact that they want to charge for some of their office supervision when we have, you know, they don't have anything to do as a job. So if, in fact, if the fire chief and the city manager could negotiate some of those costs out, then, I don't, you know, I don't want to be petty, but I don't want to be ripped off. And that's what this amounts to, just like the dumpster. We hadn't had a dumpster out there in months, not since the original demolition, so they want to charge us for a month's rent on a dumpster, and it won't be a wheelbarrow full of stuff that'll need to go in a dumpster from this part of the project. So, you know, if they can, if the city manager and the fire chief can negotiate some of that cost down and some of that rental equipment and so forth, I don't have a problem with the field office. Only thing I have a problem with is for a month, it's just going to take a week to do the work. So he's billing us for a month of the, field office billing us for a month on the fence and everything else, so I do have a lot of problem with that stuff. And I know that the 40 hours on the field manager is probably not, that's a week, so that's probably not so bad, but some of the other costs in there are. So, you know, what do you think? Can you go back and negotiate some further cuts on that thing, or we just...
I think there's the potential to shave maybe a couple thousand dollars off. I think that the challenge is, is that every day that it's delayed is more cost than we're incurring, so it's...
I understand that, but I've talked to two general contractors that I've done business with today, and this is not usual, that they add both overhead and 10% overhead and 10% fee, and then that they charge you for office people. And they did the same thing on this one at the Expo, that's what really concerns me, and I would...
I certainly understand the concern. I think a couple of ways you could go about it. You could, I mean, as staff, we're going to take our best shot at getting this whittled down further, but you could approve it as is, with the understanding that we're going to do our best. We may not get there, but we're going to try as hard as we can, or you could defer it.
Well, I don't want to defer it, because I don't want that to accumulate any more time, because I've been out there, not this week, but last week, at least twice, and nothing's happened. So that's what I'm concerned about. If they're considering this has been a delay, it shouldn't be a delay, because they've got other work that could be done. And I went out there and helped them locate the telephone, you know, where it comes in and so forth. They actually already had it located when I got there, but anyhow, they had located it. But like I said, there hasn't been any work hard out there in two weeks, so if he's trying to try to bill us back for that, we're really going to have some difficulties, because I don't, there's a lot of things they could be doing. The plumbing could be done, the outside electric, and the site work and everything else could be underway. It doesn't, this is not holding that stuff up. So I would move that, you know, just because of the delay... of the delays and the cost and everything else, that we approve with the city manager and the fire chief going back and trying to negotiate those items out. Because I think they are just totally out of line and uncalled for, the charges are.
And I second that. I share that concern with the Vice Mayor in regard to the overhead costs. I'm not a general contractor, but those certainly look surreal to me. So I would like to make that recommendation, Chief and Justin, that you have those discussions.
Absolutely.
It looks like we're getting charged on the field manager, project manager, engineer. We're paying for that already. And they're hitting us for additional is what this appears to be. And there's no one here from them to answer our questions. So-
If it's a one week job and they're billing us forty hours, I want the guy on the location the whole week.
We do too. We expect that too.
Sure.
So we're basically saying we're gonna approve it with concerns of the commission?
That's right. Wait, I agree with Justin. You could put it off and have some of one of, I could go out there with two men and do it for probably three days. But you're still gonna, they're gonna, you're gonna wind up paying for four thousand dollars for the delay. And then you take the day getting the material together, that's gonna be, you have five days, so you're gonna wind up owing five thousand dollars. So I think, you know, and like I said, the general contractor that I've talked to, this is not usual charges. So in the future, Joe, and for the city manager, I recommend that we have in our contract that there are like 10% and not 10% overhead and 10% profit. That is not in a motion, that's just a recommendation.
All very, all very good points by all the Commissioners. Are there any other questions or comments, discussion?
I hope we just, we're gonna have it on the record that I don't think anyone's happy about our choices here. We don't have a good choice. And hopefully, the general contractor understands, they may not, they may not like the outcome if this continues like this. They won't like the outcome from me anyway.
And it's certainly not that we don't want to delay the project or that we don't understand the need to get the project completed. It's just those additional costs that we're wary of, or at least in respect to me, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, we share the same concern.
They got us over a barrel. Nobody up here likes it. I know y'all don't like it either.
Yeah, I think we need to convey that to them and make sure they know that was on record. And if anything else like this comes up, they really, they really should be here to answer our questions directly.
And talking to the job superintendent, I doubt, he's not aware of any of these costs. He said, that's all come out, I have talked to him about him. He said, well, I thought, I mean, on what it was before, he was also superintendent out there Expo. So I asked him about those costs. And he said he wasn't aware. That all came from the office, he didn't have anything to do with it. So-
We're ready. Call a question.
I just wanted to know that we're not happy about it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Call a question.
Could we have it read back to us what we're asking?
I have a motion here for you to sit here and try to negotiate costs further.
Okay. Is that acceptable language, Justin? Can you work within that?
One, Commissioner.
Certainly work within it. Perhaps to negotiate further reduction in costs.
Yeah, negotiate further reduction.
I think that was more in line with-
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries seven zero. Acknowledge sales tax report for September.
Um, we're up just a little bit. September deposit for sales tax was one million, four hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, which compared to last year, we were only at twenty-five hundred. Reports just came out Friday, and I haven't had a chance to look at them to exactly see where they are. In the October meeting, probably the first one, possibly the second one, I'll have a full accounting of the first quarter revenues. I just closed our fiscal year last week because the auditors are in today. So I'll be, that's why I'm brief.
Good. I'll lock up a little. Item ten, city manager report.
Thank you again. I will just update you briefly on a few items. You have a full report in your packet. Thank you all for your help with the Cops and Kids event. That was a big success. We estimate at least fifteen hundred members of the public that were there. And on the last page of that report, there's some photographs from that event. That was just wonderful. I'd like to also thank all of the participating agencies. Of course, Shawnee Police and Shawnee Fire had big roles, but so did County Sheriff's Office and tribal entities and emergency management personnel from the county and the surrounding communities. So just a really great event. We hope to make that an annual event, something we can hold every single year. We have gotten our final pool numbers in for 2017. And this season was our best one yet since the rehabilitation of that facility in 2015. In 2015, we saw twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred plus participants through the door. Of course, that was a shortened season. In 2016, we had just under thirty-five thousand. And this year, we had just over forty thousand. So really a great attendance. We had good participation with our, with our annual passes as well. We increased our entry gate fee a dollar this year to account for additional costs. And that kind of helped spur people to the season pass, which was really good for us because they, those people that have season passes are kind of your patrons for the facility. And they help care for it in a little different way maybe than just your casual users. And lastly, I wanted to mention a photo contest that started today, actually, that Visit Shawnee in partnership with the City of Shawnee is hosting. If you go to visitshawnee.com, you will notice it featured prominently on their website. And for the next two weeks, the community at large is invited to submit photographs for that contest. There's cash prizes. The photographs will be used for promotional purposes by Visit Shawnee. And then we will also be able to use photographs for our new website, which is slated to launch in December. Really excited about that. We're hoping for several thousand photographs that are submitted. And I think winners will be announced in early October, early to mid October. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on any other matters, any pending, any projects that are out there.
Justin, I have several questions for you tonight on that. Could you educate me on the rehab concrete streets project? Is there a specific plan with locations set by priorities? Or how does that work?
Excellent question. The current contract that we have with MTZ Construction, who is also our contractor for sidewalks, involved rehabilitation of concrete panels that had failed in the North Ridge subdivisions. And those subdivisions are multiple phases on the north and the south side of MacArthur Street between Harrison and Bryan. And that's been their principal area that they've been working. I believe that they're, that they are kind of nearing the end of that contract. And there's quite a, quite a number of panels to repair. And so your question is probably what kind of asking what's next. I don't know that they'll be able to go to other areas until the next contract comes up. But your bigger question about priorities is one that we're tackling right now. A couple of months ago, we had on the consent agenda, and you authorized us to negotiate with a contractor that specializes in street evaluation, street planning, and the kind of the fiscal side, pavement preservation. And so we are doing that. I think we're hopeful that we can have a contract to you at the next meeting. We can actually have somebody professionally evaluate every street in town. And we have hundred, literally hundreds of miles of paved streets that will be evaluated and then categorized in terms of, in terms of need. And the way they do this now is sophisticated with laser, laser equipment where they can actually calculate undulation in roads and potholes and deviations from standard specifications. And so I think we don't have that contract ready to present to you yet. Again, hopefully next meeting. But in that contract will be a timeframe, which will be set forth. So you'll know kind of better parameters. I doubt it will be finished by the end of the calendar. It'll probably be more kind of winter or spring 2018 type completion.
Okay. And since MTZ Construction also holds the contract for our sidewalk projects, how are those two relating? Or do they relate?
They, they're not, they're two separate contracts for two very distinct purposes. The sidewalk contract is going very well. If you've been on Independence Street recently, you'll notice that they've finalized the connection to Sequoia Elementary. And so you can now walk from Bryan Street to Center Street on a new sidewalk and then go south to Kid Space Park. So that was a big link there and a big missing gap that we had for a safe walking route to school. So that's now been completed. They're now working on East Main Street, making a connection from Boy Scout Park to Bryan. And so when they make that connection, then we'll have sidewalks all the way from down Main Street all the way to East Main to Bryan. And then of course, the Bryan Street Trail. And then you could go down Independence. And eventually on MacArthur Street, we've got that grant that we obtained from ODOT as well that we'll be starting on in 2018. So lots of activity happening with sidewalks. And you're right, just kind of a coincidence that we have the same contractor. We bid those projects separately. Sometimes it's different contractors that are doing different work. But in this case, that one contractor's been the low bidder both times. And we've had good, good success with them.
Okay. And the development projects, I guess you had listed as a category of development projects. And I'd noticed that the Domino project, I guess, is well underway and that the earthwork and installation's been done. And I guess my continued question is, what are those four eating establishments?
I would love to tell you. I honestly don't know. I honestly don't know. I'm very excited to have that figured out as well. I know that they're, they're marketing the property heavily. They've had good conversations. They've had draft contracts with companies that they won't tell me their names of. So I think we're really close to that announcement. I really do. Hopefully before the end of the year, we'll have that announcement. The service station will be open before the end of the year and, which is exciting. And but of course, that's just a small piece of that, of that site. So we're excited for those four sites.
I'm excited too on that. Now, I had noticed on, and the chief just walked out, I guess, the animal control, that you had a couple of projects that are going to be funded through Lowe's Improvement.
Yes.
Through a grant, I guess, Money for Hero Grant that was provided.
Thank you for mentioning that. We were honored to be selected as a major recipient of a grant from Lowe's. And not just from the, kind of the standard giving that they do in all of their communities, but this is more of a corporate giving and kind of a corporate head office effort, which is good because it means additional funds and resources. So it looks like we're gonna get around seventy-five thousand dollars to completely rehab the animal shelter, which would include things like flooring and cabinets and countertops and kind of just those things that will help spruce up the facility, make it more inviting to the public. It will include landscaping, maybe some cosmetic improvements on the outside in addition to the landscaping. So we can really help make that a showpiece, which is very exciting.
You've already done some improvements on the back part where they keep the animals.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we've expanded that recently so we can hold more, more canines. So that from an, from an animal standpoint, it's in, it's in good shape. From a cosmetic standpoint and to the, to the public that comes there, this will really, really help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Item eleven, administrative reports, James.
All right. Now we're to something exciting. You heard the report on the, on the pool this evening, which, which we're very happy about. And I can just kind of see that continuing on as, as we develop more things for the pool to do. One of the things also that will help out with that is in our parks plan, we're designing a couple of other party areas to go along with that pool because we only have one party room in there. And we're selling more parties than we have room for. We're putting them outside in the refreshment area for their birthday parties. So that's gonna be, if we get some funding for that, that'll be something nice to have over there to be able to have more birthday parties at one time. So parks and recreation, something not new to Shawnee, but something new now that we're really excited about. And some of this kind of stemmed from the pool and how well that's doing. And plus, the other two acquisitions that we made this past year with funding some, some improvements to the auditorium. And now the City of Shawnee park staff operating that. And the community center where the YMCA didn't renew their, their lease with us, we now are leasing that out ourselves to people to do things there. And with that, with the money that we were using to pay the YMCA, we had a position there that we filled. We started out with just filling that with a person that sat down there all day long. But, but once that individual left, we really got to thinking and saying, hey, we really need to create some things. So, so we created a position with that money that, that's called our program coordinator. And that individual really takes care of both facilities with the leasing and stuff, and also comes up with, with the things you see on this form here, the schedule with the movie in the park and doggy dip day and stuff. I want to just kind of go over, I'll try not to talk too long, but I want you to really get a feel for what's going on here. I kind of wanted to start with, with the water park, which continues to do very well. During the season itself, the USA Swim Team uses that facility every morning to do their practice. Currently, OBU is using the facility. And they are planning a swim meet there. Actually, it's an NCAA, the first year we've had an NCAA swim meet there, September 22nd at 3:00 PM. Last year, they did that. We had four teams there and had a pretty good turnout. And we're hoping to have a better turnout this year. Of course, everybody looks forward to our doggy dip day, which last year, I don't remember how many dogs we had running loose in the pool, but it was several. But it is a fun time. It is a fun time. And, you know, five dollars per entry for your dog to get to swim in our nice pool, I don't think's too bad.
Is that after the swim?
That's after swim meet. This is the very last thing we do before we drain the pool. Getting to, to the auditorium and community center, of course, we love to be able to really get after scheduling events there. But we do have a few. And I believe some of those are on the schedule, which is a teen talent show that's coming up October 6th. And Friday, the 13th is in October. So we are showing the movie Friday, the 13th at the auditorium, which may prove to be fun.
Is there an admission?
There is an admission for Friday, the 13th, which is five dollars admission. A lot of the things that you see that we do, we try to keep the cost at zero or minimum. Things like our movies in the park, those are free for families to come out. We will have refreshments out there that will cost though. Getting back to the auditorium, we're looking at open gym time coming pretty soon. So in the evenings, we'll have some open gym time. We just have a few more things to purchase for that. Community Center, it's very popular with birthday parties, family reunions, and baby showers. You might not know that three nights a week down there karate is being taught. Shortly, we will be starting up some CPR classes down there. And we have what is called the power hour classes, Monday through Friday from nine AM, at nine AM and at 1:00 PM. Six week course, twenty dollars a person for some, I guess, some high power aerobics. Six-week course, $20 a person for some, I guess, some high-power aerobics exercise. The parks, like I've mentioned, the movies and the parks, the first one's September 22nd at Kid Space at 7:30. It's free to get in. We're showing Back to the Future. On October 22nd at Wygant Park at 7:00 PM, we'll be showing a movie. I don't know that we know what that is yet. Yappy Hour at our dog park. We've had two events. Every Thursday in September, for an hour, hour and a half at the dog park, starting at 6:00 PM, we have what we call Yappy Hour, that you come out, bring your pet, and let him run, associate with other dogs, and we give away door prizes. And I think each week, we have a different thing going on over there. I believe last week, they had some best tricks on your dogs. This week, I think it's the smiley dog. You turn in pictures of your dog smiling, and somebody's going to win something. There are sponsors for that event, and some of them even set up in the park, just as well as our animal shelter. They bring out aboard with pictures of animals that they have there that are ready to adopt. We have the Doggy Spot, Shawnee Mills, Holly Dog, Room and Groom, PetSmart, Best Friends Animal Clinic, Shirley's Grooming are all some of our sponsors out there that give door prizes, and some of them are there on the spot. What I want to do, and I think most of y'all are familiar with Carrie Foster, who we originally hired to operate the pool, who is now our recreation manager, and Rachel Monday, who is our program coordinator, if y'all would stand, so everybody knows who you are. Those are the ladies responsible. They do a very good job, and I'm telling you, the turnout we've had so far, let me go back to the dog park. The first event, we had 54 people out there at this event. The second one, we had...
No dog fights?
No dog fights yet.
And people fights?
In the second event, we had 46 people. So, you know, it's good. Our goal was on the first event, we were going to be happy to have 10, so it really exceeded our expectations, and we hope that the rest of our events do that. As we go on, we'll be rolling out some more items. I think one of our favorites, I think, is going to be PJs with Santa in the auditorium, which I think will be a fun event. And then on Veterans Day, we have a pie baking contest down at the community center, so just...
I'm interested in the pie baking, but I'm interested in the pie eating.
Yeah. I think they're looking for judges. But we only have two people in this department, and some of the things that we've done, we've pulled in some of the lifeguards to help us out every once in a while, but, you know, we're kind of limited on what we can really do with who we have, and we're going to make the best of it till we can get some more employees part-time there. One of the things that we are doing, we have OBU and ECU onboard with internships, so that's going to help out, and really, it's about all I have, so...
Are you interested in developing a volunteer base to help you with some of this stuff, James?
I think we'll probably look into that, yes.
James, is your report and information online, or can it be placed online so individuals can review it?
We can. The report I just gave you with everything, yes. We can put that in a forum to put online so everybody can see it. And everything that is going on there at the bottom of your schedule is the site where you can go and see everything that's going on. We're kind of excited for the new city website to be rolled out, and we'll have our nice little Parks and Recreation page on there, so...
I'd certainly like the community to be able to see that through an online access point.
Well, one of the things we're also doing, back in the 80s, when recreation was still going with the city, the city put out twice a year a newsletter, and we are looking back into that, which will put our schedules and things going on with the city of spring, summer, and a fall/winter program out there. We are working with VSI, who wants to team up with us on that, so our thoughts are, if we can get one of those into every household in the City of Shawnee by mail, then I think we can reach a good base that way.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Good job, James.
Thanks, James.
Is there any new business?
No, sir.
Commissioner comments?
I just wanted to say, well, for the chief, the three probationary firefighters you got, I wish them a lot of luck in an uneventful, you know, probationary period, but I'm glad to hear that we've got some more energetic individuals out there.
Well, I try not to beat a dead horse to death here, but the, I was just sitting here thinking about, I don't know how the change orders are handled through the street department, but I would suggest that we'd probably take a look at those because I can't recall very many. Of course, I know they bid on quantities and things like that, so it's quite a bit of difference, but anyhow. And to Polly, I enjoyed the pictures. I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not much of a night person, so I didn't make it down to the block party. And James, I'm very pleased about the new events taking place, and yeah, I'm interested in the pie eating contest, if you have, or whatever it is. I get the pie. But I do, I mean, like I said, I don't want to beat a dead horse to death, but I just think that, you know, it's a commission's responsibility, and since I've had 20-some years' experience in construction, I really am concerned about those change orders, and I hope we don't have any additional ones. So, just to move forward from there, and I appreciate the city manager and the chief's work on that, too. Thank you.
Justin brought up cops and kids. I was going to mention that, too. That was a great event, unbelievable turnout for the citizens of Shawnee and the surrounding area, and then the participation was amazing. I don't know how many actual departments total ended up, but it was a huge event for Shawnee, so I want to thank Chief Wilson for getting that going, and all of the local law enforcement agencies that participated in it. Chief Wilson, Corporal Lozano did a great job getting that together. Chief Tisher, your guys there, they did a great job. Visited with them quite a bit. They brought something to my attention that, the car seat deal that they were offering, is there times that they do these car seat things, or could you kind of...
We try to do, we try to do two of those a year at minimum. That was our second one. We may try to do another one this year, but we advertise those. Usually, we do it at Station 3, just because it's easy to kind of run people through. We kind of clear out the bay and just kind of run through there, but that was our second event for this year. I think we had one earlier in the spring. We try to kind of catch the good weather and stuff and advertise them, but we may hope to do another one this year.
So, not only do you, you'll teach proper installation, if someone buys a new car seat, then what...
It's actually, it's a three-day class that some of our guys have gone to, and what we do is have people come in, the guys actually install it for them. It's much more complicated than I realized, as far as the, matter of fact, we even use a lot of these pool noodles. So, they see us buying these at the store, and what do firefighters buy pool noodles for? We cut them in one-foot sections, and we use those to kind of shim the car seats, and that's all part of the course. The guys learn how to do all that, and it's pretty amazing to watch them put these things in. You really have to crank them down and get them in there really tight, and they do a great job. So, we always put, you know, want people to know that they can come by. We have enough guys now that are certified, they can come by at any time, and we'll have somebody available.
So, they can schedule an appointment, just come by?
Yes, yes. If they call, yes, if they call our office, 878-1671, Danny'd be happy to schedule that for them, and we'll have guys available. And then we also try to schedule, just like the other day, we'll have events that people can come out to and know about it, but if they just need to come by a fire station, they can come by, or they can call and call our offices, and we can get that set up. The guys do a real good job on that, really, really good service.
Thank you. That's something that people need to know that the city offers. It's such great that your guys do that.
Absolutely. Very proud of them for doing it.
It's good to see them there with the cops and kids, too, stealing the cops thunder.
That's right. That's right. Anytime we can.
And James, Bryce, your guys did great prepping the park, you know, having it ready. Couldn't do it without, couldn't do it without your guys being down there, and it was a good job keeping it going, keeping it clean, having it ready, and everyone appreciated that.
Well, well done on kids and cops and cops and kids and all the volunteers that you had there. From what I read and from what I saw, it was just an amazing event, and thank you for all of the Herculean effort that you put out. I have a question in regard to the block party. How many would you estimate was there?
In our block? 135 people.
Well done. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for your above and beyond work. I think anyone who gets an award through the city does a great job anyway, but thank I know there's a lot of stop and goes, Chief Tisher, on your project over there on Bryan Street, but you're making progress, and for that, I thank you. AARP, thank you so much for this grant. We appreciate it. We appreciate what it's going to do for the community that you have selected to place this in, and we can't begin to say thank you enough. And Justin, thank you for all of your staff's work on that.
I concur with what the other commissioners were saying about the cops and kids, and welcoming the three probationary firemen onboard. Fire Department's also got something coming up, hopefully, which is today, fire prevention week, and the clowns that will be teaching fire prevention and safety and all, and we've got a pretty good schedule on Monday and Monday, there are four projects each day. We're even going to have a public performance, so hopefully, we'll go with city performance. And then I, this week, I saw one of our new park signs at Optimus Park, and with our logo on it, it really looks nice.
Great. Thank you all. Jared, always nice to see somebody go over and above, and we appreciate it and duly acknowledge. And James, it's, I'm really happy to see your enthusiasm and the enthusiasm of your folks in doing this stuff. I can tell you're enjoying it, and it shows, and it will show in the participation. I don't know that anybody has noticed, but we have some boy scouts with us tonight. They're here observing as part of their earning a merit badge of some sort. Y'all are always welcome to come. No other comments. This meeting is adjourned. We'll go to the Shawnee Airport Authority Agenda. We have a quorum. We'll consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Shaw.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bouchon. Call a question? Motion carries 6-0. Commissioner Gillum had to excuse himself for another event. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority Agenda. Would again enter, consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Shaw. Second by Commissioner, was that you, Salter? Call a question? Motion carries 6-0. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
We are adjourned.